And to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
President Kuschemerek.
Present.
Counselor Bean, Counselor Boishman.
Here.
Counselor Beazall.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally, Counselor Donnelly.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Joseph.
Here.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Tran.
Here.
Before we begin tonight's agenda, I'd just like to ask for a brief moment of silence for the daughter of our city treasurer, Calvin Brooks, Sheri Bergstrom-Brooks. Thank you. Public forum, anyone wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you are addressing public hearing petitions, you will have an opportunity to speak at that time. Please approach the center table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda to which you are speaking. Does anyone wish to speak at this time? Good evening. Ms. Bernhardt.
Sheriff Bernhardt, Library Director. I'm speaking to two orders, 008 and 009. And what is happening at the moment is we're ready, almost ready to apply to the, for the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Grant presented by the Board of Library Commissioners. The grant is due next Thursday. And what these two orders are for is to really allow us to go ahead with the application. Once we are awarded the grant, which could be in July or any time in the next four or five years, then we have six months to come up with a funding plan. So that's the point at which we would talk about how we're going to fund it. And this week, early next week, there'll be an RFP going out for a feasibility study for fundraising consultant. So that person would help us determine from where we can get the funding, additional funding that we would need after the council votes to share some of the bonding money with us. So that's where we stand.
Motion to suspend the rules on 817 and 917.
Second.
I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on 008 and 009, 2017. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed, they are before you.
Motion to accept 00817 and 00917.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept 008 and 00917. Speaking to the motion, Counselor Beazall.
Thank you. I mean, I'm very excited for the project. I'm very excited that they're moving ahead with this. I guess my only concern is, in the time that I've sat on the council, we've heard a lot of projects coming up and everybody's waiting for the day when we can take out the bond money and use it. I was just wondering if there's a possibility that at some point, we could get a sheet with when the money becomes available and how much money, if anything, has already been dedicated to other areas, or do we know in the future where the funds are going? So that when people come before us, we have a better idea as to how much is left, how much we can spend, and how much we can allocate to each item. And I think it would help people, when they come before us, say, we know long-term that we're going to be able to borrow X number, and we've already said that these funds are targeted for these areas. So this is what's left of that money. And I don't know how it's, you know, how we can get a report like that, but, and I know it has nothing to do with what's before us tonight, which I'll be voting in favor of. It's just, I would like to have something so in the future, when people come before us, we can let people know, these are the funds available to spend in the future.
Counselor, I'm sure we can work with the mayor's office and the auditor's office to prepare something long-term.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Joseph.
I guess I feel like, and I do this with a lot of regret, that I'm, being a realist, I'm not in favor of this, just because of the fact that we have other needs in the city. We do have a need to improve the library. We do not have a need for a $38 million renovation or renewal of the library. So I know that everybody loves to hop on the bandwagon, but we're spending public money to do this, whether it's either to apply for the grant, write the grant, do all of the things that we need to do. And I know that they're looking for a sourcing, a funding source method, but as a realist, I can't see a funding source that's going to hand over $38 million unless it's sitting in the corner right over there, because the city's the only one that could borrow this kind of money. I just see the need for a city hall that we can all work together at, and also, if we do need a new Crocker Elementary School, or a new Academy Street School, before we need a new public library, I think we should have, we set our priorities. And as much as I know that the library needs a new heating system, it needs new air conditioning, it needs new windows, I know it needs a lot of renovations, but I just am not prepared to even entertain the thought of going out for this big a project for the library at this point. And I say that with a lot of regret, only because I just feel that we're setting up a lot of expectations, setting up a lot of hopes, and I just can't see the city delivering on this, but we're still continuing to spend money on the project.
Counselor Green.
Sheriff, my only question, and maybe this is not the appropriate time to ask that, but the library has a trust fund. How much of that money can you tap into for this project?
I'm not sure of that total at this point, but only a couple hundred thousand at the most, because there's a lot of restricted principal that we can't use for anything other than what it's restricted for, its uses.
Okay. Would you be able to provide us the parameters of how that, the money in the trust fund, what it can and cannot be spent on?
We're working on putting that all together now.
Okay.
We're going to hopefully get, I'm sure you need to help us work that through.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
You know, I'm getting kind of the same stand Counselor Joseph has taken on this library bit. I really don't think, oh, ha, that it's going to benefit everybody in the city of Pittsburgh, because not everybody uses the library. Whereas, as Counselor Joseph, city hall, the schools, even our roads, which are unbelievable bad, should take a preference, I think, at this time. I don't know if I'm going to be voting for this at this present time. I'm sorry.
I have a motion and second to accept 008 and 00917. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Please keep your hands raised. Two in opposition, motion carries. Thank you. If there are no objections, we'll now hear an oral report from the Appointments Committee. Committee met earlier this evening, four members were present. We have two new appointments. The first, Pittsburgh Conservation Commission, to fill the balance of the term of Mr. Thomas Starr, set to expire January 1st, 2018. That was from Mr. John Cordio, who's also here this evening. The second appointment was for the Pittsburgh License Commission, to fill the balance of the term of Ms. Linda Swears, who's also here this evening, and we'd like to thank her for her service, set to expire June 1st, 2018. And that appointment was for Mr. Glenn Fossa. We also had two outstanding matters this evening, for the appointment of the Pittsburgh License Commission. Mr. E. Thomas Donnelly, term to expire in May 2010, and that was, that appointment was denied. We also had a petition, 213, 2000, George A. Sanders, to review policy of appointments and reappointments by the majors outlined. In the petition, that petition was given leave to withdraw.
Motion to approve the Appointments Committee report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve the Appointments Committee report. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The appointments are confirmed. Again, I'd like to recognize Mr. John Cordio and Mr. Glenn Fossa, who are just confirmed and who will be serving the city. So thank you for your service. I'd also like to also like to thank Ms. Linda Swears, who served on the License Commission these past couple of years. Thank you for your efforts. We'll now have a report from the Committee on Records. Counselor Donnelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will do the records, and they appear to be in order.
Motion to accept the Committee on Records report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report from the Committee on Records. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The motion carries. Communications from his honor, the mayor, appointment letters. The first, Ms. Nancy Maynard, to fill the balance of the term of Mr. Philip Jordan as a member of the Pittsburgh Trustees of Public Burial Grounds, with an expiration date set to expire on January 1st, 2018. The second, Ms. Cynthia Jones, as a member of the Board of Trustees of Pittsburgh Public Library, for a term to expire on January 1st, 2020. Number three, Ms. April Maldonado, as a member of the Human Rights Commission, for a term to expire January 1st, 2020. And then we have a couple of promotion letters for those being sworn in this evening. We'll read all of these letters, at which point, the clerk will then call up the appropriate groups to swear them in. Chief, at this time, I'd ask you to come forward. The promotion letters are as follows. The first, Lieutenant Harry H. Hess, to the rank of Police Captain. Sergeant Matthew D. LeMay, to the rank of Police Captain. Promotions to be effective Wednesday, January 18th, 2017. The second letter, Sergeant Christopher T. Garcia, to the rank of Permanent Police Lieutenant. Officer Daniel F. Boudreaux, to the rank of Permanent Police Sergeant. Officer John E. Mackey, to the rank of Provisional Police Sergeant. Promotions to be effective Wednesday, January 18th, 2017. Chief Martino.
Good evening, Counselors. Thank you. This is an extremely monumental night for the Pittsburgh Police Department, to have this type of change in our command structure, something we haven't seen in decades at the Pittsburgh Police Department. First of all, I'd like to thank the City Council for allowing me and the Pittsburgh Police Department to hold our swearing-in ceremony in front of this board, also in front of the viewing public. I think it's important that we recognize the efforts that each of these officers have put forward to get promoted. Each of these officers have put much time and effort into their promotional process, and each represents the top scores in each of their class, which speaks volumes. So all the people who are being presented tonight for swearing in, we're at the top of their list for the promotional exam. A lot of hard work goes into it, and it really means a lot for us to share our evening with you and the viewing public. With that, we're going to begin tonight with the promotion to the rank of Police Captain, which we have two. We have Lieutenant Hess, and we have Sergeant LeMay, that will be promoting to the rank of Permanent Police Captain.
Captains?
We'll just hear them.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take an oath. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As Police Captain.
As Police Captain.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, very well deserved.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Counselors, we have to do the next three promotions separately because of civil service requirements. So next, I'd like to call up Lieutenant Chris Garcia.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me to take an oath. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As permanent police sergeant.
As permanent police sergeant.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
Next, I'd like to call forward Sergeant Bean Boudreaux.
Please repeat after me to take an oath. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As permanent police sergeant.
As permanent police sergeant.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
In our last promotion tonight is Office, excuse me, Detective John Mackey, who's being promoted to Provisional Police Sergeant.
Please repeat after me to take an oath. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I do solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Perform and discharge all the duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As Provisional Police Sergeant.
As Provisional Police Sergeant.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
For the city of Pittsburgh.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Saj.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
John. Congratulations. Sergeant, congratulations.
Once again, Counselors, I'd like to thank Sheriff, every one of you, for allowing the Police Department to share an arduous event tonight in front of the City Council, in front of the viewers at home at FATV. However, before I conclude tonight, there's one more person that I'd like to recognize, one more member of the Pittsburgh Police Department. Deputy Chief Bozekis.
Did it catch wind? He figured out what we were doing.
Send Big D after him.
His wife is here. We could certainly present his wife.
Counselor President. Is he still in the building?
Yes, Counselor Beazall.
I guess while we're waiting for him to come in, I want to thank the chief too, because I realize that all the work that goes in behind doing all of this, you know, the promotions and everything else, is quite a bit of work, and so I want to say congratulations to you and the whole department. Thank you. And while I'm on record, I'd like to thank the City Council and the mayor for supporting the Police Department the way you have. We have made strides in the last 10 years with our manpower. Thus, the seeing of these promotions, we're finally getting back to where we were, you know, seven to eight years ago, because our manpower has increased. And nothing's more important than true proper supervision of any police department. So through the support of the mayor's office and the city council, this is often available. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I apologize.
I think he's out shoveling the woks.
I just felt it was necessary, and I'm going to say it to the City Council this evening. As we mark a beginning for these new promotions, we mark the end of a spectacular career by Deputy Chief Bozekis. It's funny, and I'll share with this, he made me promise him not to throw him a retirement party, but I felt it was appropriate to recognize his efforts this evening. Though for 33 years, the deputy has held every position within the Police Department, and he's done so gallantly. He has orchestrated civilian police academies, he's orchestrated our internship program, he's been mentoring young police officers, he's a very, he's going to be impossible to replace. And he will go down as the last deputy chief in the city of Pittsburgh Police Department because our command structure has changed. I thought it was important tonight to recognize his efforts. I brought his family and his friends with him here this evening. I'd like to just go on record and say that I am eternally grateful for everything that Paul Bozekis did for the city of Pittsburgh during his 33-year career. I know the type of gentleman he is, and he's too proud to walk in here right now. And on that.
Chief, we have a member of his family who's been equally as well involved in serving our city, and I think maybe we could present these citations to his wife, Chris Bozekis.
That would be something you'd be interested in, Chris?
He's not going to answer.
Just to let the Counselors know, we have a proclamation from the mayor and from State Representative Steve Hay, on behalf of the House of Representatives, congratulating the deputy on.
Wait, this is a tough.
He still works for me for 12 more hours, so he could get some. The boss will get him. Come on, Paul, we're on. As I said before, since I've taken over as chief, there's been no better right-hand person in the Police Department. He's given me guidance, he's given me inspiration. I couldn't ask for a better second in command than what I've had with Deputy Bozekis. And I felt it was appropriate, after 33 years of service that he's given to this city, to recognize him. I did promise him no parties, and I was true to that. But the work he's done for the city of Pittsburgh needs recognition.
Thank you.
And we are eternally grateful to you, Deputy.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
No, I think I probably called you almost as much as I call Chief Martino.
Your number's been deleted.
Says I'm going to delete his number. I'm still going to call you. Now that you said that, I'm calling you anyway.
Anytime.
I am, okay. We, you know, we can't be, at this time in our history, when the police departments throughout the country are becoming targets, we're so proud and honored to have a police department that's a true community partner. And you've been a part of that certainly for 33 years. And this is just a small token, Paul, really small token for 33 years, but it's a citation of the city of Pittsburgh and the people of Pittsburgh, thanking you for all those years of service. Thank you.
We also have a Representative Stephen Hay, who's here to present a citation.
Paul, Steve. You're a mentor and a role model for every person who puts on that uniform in the Pittsburgh Police Department. Citation from the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Deputy Chief Paul Bozekis in recognition of 33 years of service on the Pittsburgh Police Department. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope, future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors, given this 17th day of January 2017, Robert A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, offered by Stephen Hay, State Representative. Congratulations.
Thank you, Counselors, for your time tonight.
Thank you.
It's a sad day to see the retirement of our deputy chief, but certainly a bright day to see so many of these officers promoted and the future of our Police Department. City's in good hands moving forward. Thank you to the entire Police Department for being here and for all that you do each and every day in our city. Thank you. I'll give this 60 seconds for those in the room to leave before we resume the normal agenda. All right. We'll now resume the agenda. We had one final communication labeled as other. Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development regarding combined environmental notice. It'll be placed on file in the city clerk's office. Next, we have Hearing 24815. This is a remanded special permit public hearing, 24815, Jeffrey Dumay, for renovations to property located at 196-198 Water Street, that has been vacant for more than two years. Renovations do include rental apartments on second and third floor and two commercial spaces on the first floor. Declare the hearing now open. I'd like to ask the persons representing the petition to please come forward, introduce themselves at the center table. Counselor Donnelly.
I refuse myself from the hearing, because my brother-in-law owns a piece of land in Washington, yeah, so.
Thank you, Counselor Donnelly. Good evening. Gentlemen, I'll let you introduce this petition, what you're seeking to do, and then we'll allow time for Counselors to ask questions.
Sure. John Dombrowski, I represent the petitioner Jeffrey Dumay, who's seated to my right. Essentially, Mr. Dumay acquired property at 196-198 Water Street. And he's a first-time property owner, so he naively invested his life savings into the property without getting any of the proper permits. He was advised that he had to get the proper permits. He came before the City Council for a special permit. I submitted a package for each counselor, and as part of the package is a set of plans, which I believe Mr. Dumay submitted the first time he appeared before the council. And I think that you can see that with the last page of the plan, the big issue for Mr. Dumay was parking. He simply didn't have any parking. Nonetheless, there was a hearing before the City Council, and the council voted by a five-to-four vote to deny Mr. Dumay. Mr. Dumay then retained my services, and we essentially appealed the council's decision to the Worcester Superior Court. I want to note, and I think Attorney Pousatari and Attorney Goldstein can attest, that Mr. Dumay's position has always been to try to resolve this and address the concerns that have been raised by the council. And to that end, we communicated that almost immediately to the city solicitors. We initiated the suit, really just to preserve his rights. You're given a very short timeframe in which you can do that. And he's looked for parking everywhere. He, we had discussions with the church to either buy some parking there, or rent some parking, or obtain some type of aneasement. The church was not interested in doing anything piecemeal. We looked at the vacant lot next door to our property, which is owned by a third party who hasn't paid taxes in years. Unfortunately, we could not locate that person, and according to the tax collector for the city of Pittsburgh, they're still, the city is still a couple years away from taking that property, from conducting a tax-taking. We were able to locate directly across the street from Mr. Dumay's property, a vacant lot. It used to be a three-family. I believe there was some type of fire, and the building was razed. We hired an engineer, and we put together a parking plan that I've We hired an engineer and we put together a parking plan that I've submitted to each one of you, which gives us, I believe, 15 parking spaces across the street. I know that the planning board has reviewed this and made a decision that they're not in favor of Mr. Dumay's application. That's their recommendation to you. It's my understanding that every other department with certain conditions is in favor, or at least they were the last time all the department had submitted their recommendations to us. The planning board has indicated that they have difficulty because there's going to be a need to cross the street to access Mr. Dumay's property from the parking lot. I know two things about that. The access from the parking lot by vehicle is onto a side street before you get onto Water Street, which I think is a plus in Mr. Dumay's favor. You know, Mr. Dumay's from the Boston area. He's from Somerville, so I've had trouble talking to him about this notion of crossing the street, as it's done all the time in Somerville. But that area of Water Street, bottlenecks, you know, it goes from four lanes where it connects with Lemonster, and in that area, it drops down to just two travel lanes, one going in each direction. There's a supermarket there, they just built the Dollar Store. There is a lot of foot traffic in that area. And from our position, you know, government many times is about priorities, it's about choices, and Mr. Dumay has a blighted property, for lack of a better word, a lot of vandalism there, a lot of drug activity. The property that he's acquiring is a property that has not been paying taxes for some period of time. Our agreement with the property owner is that we're going to bring those taxes current, but it's also a property that is in disrepair, and he's proposing to improve both properties. It's going to be owner-occupied, and he went from having no parking to at least 15 parking spaces directly across the street. So we're, you know, our position is that this is a big change from the last time he appeared before this council, and he's made some significant strides to try to address the concerns that were raised. We believe he has addressed those concerns, and we would ask for a favorable vote from this council.
Council Green.
Hi, Mr. Dumay. Nice to see you again. As you know, I am the ward counselor for that area of town. I appreciate your attorney being here tonight to help answer some of these continuing concerns that we have. And again, I just want to start by saying that we in the city of Pittsburgh are not... We don't like to say no to business, first and foremost, but I am extremely concerned, once again, about... You're talking about acquiring property here on the corner of Nashua and Water Street, property that you don't own yet, that has an assessed value of $25,300. And with hearing, again, in the letter, and then once again from your attorney, that you have put all of your life savings into the purchase of this property, which was $40,000-some dollars. And I just wanted to know if, when you initially bought that property, if you had legal counsel representing you through that process?
Like, when I finished signing the papers?
Like, who... Was there any legal counsel that advised you that there was going to need to be special permits, that the property has sat vacant for two years and that you are now under the condition that we could put special conditions on this property?
No, ma'am.
I feel bad about that because I would have liked to have thought that legal counsel would have at least advised you that this may not be the best-suited property for you to go forward with the project that you want to do. I understand that you still want to do the barber and nail salon and then live on the second floor, rent out the third floor. And I want to support you in doing that, but probably not at this site, only because it raises concerns with, you know, how are you ever going to put the money into this property to get it to these beautiful plans that I see, knowing the condition of the property as it sits right now? I mean, you have no copper, you have no electrical. Your property is, quite frankly, in disrepair, you know, so I'm wondering how you're going to go about that if you're going to, you know, continue to put considerable time, effort, and money into this project. I'm concerned about that, that in another year, two years, that it's going to end up, you know, in front of me on the ICE committee with not being able to get what you need done in the time that we could allow you to do this project.
He has the backing of family that are willing to back him in this endeavor, and we have reached an agreement with the owner across the street, who is represented by council, local council here in Pittsburgh.
Is there a purchase-and-sale agreement?
There are. All of the documents, including the deed, the note, and the mortgage have been finalized. We're just really awaiting, you know, what this council does. In fact, the first four months have already been prepaid. The first four months of the mortgage have already been prepaid by Mr. Dumay, and I believe... Didn't you go to the tax collector?
Yeah.
He met with the tax collector to work out paying the back taxes if he acquired the property.
Is the purchase-and-sale agreement contingent upon what our decision is tonight?
Yes, yes, it would be contingent on that.
Has Mr. Dumay... Because I see that the parking plan was done for the current owner.
It was actually done for Mr. Dumay. I don't know why the engineer who drew up the plan did it that way, but we asked the engineer to do it. We paid the engineer. I don't know why it was done that way.
All right.
Maybe because he was still the owner of record at the time.
Probably, which would make sense, which, again, red flags for me. Fifteen... These 15 parking spaces were presented by who as proposed? Is that what Mr. Dumay potentially needs or wants? Those are tight. I mean, those are tight... That's a tight 15 spaces, and you've allowed no room for snow removal.
What we asked the engineer to do was to give us as many spaces as he could conceivably. What Mr. Dumay's needs are, if you look at the zoning bylaw for the city of Pittsburgh, I think if you consider this a multifamily, then he would need two spaces for each unit. So he's proposing two residential units, so that's four spaces. And depending on what commercial use that he would put there, the requirements for the city of Pittsburgh are one for every 300 square feet or whatever you deem adequate to accommodate. I know Mr. Dumay's long-range plans are... He's been going to school in Texas. He's received his HVAC certificate, so he's going to be an apprentice and work. His long-range plans are to one day have a company there, you know, but that's not the type of business where you get a lot of customer traffic. You get more phone calls and internet use, and then you go to the person's home. But that's his long-range plans, but, you know, he's got a lot of renovation to do as well, so I think, you know, I don't know if the parking for the commercial unit is going to come into play right away.
Again, when this was presented, he was going to do barbery, going to do barber, and his girlfriend or fiancee, I'm sorry, I can't remember, was going to go to school to learn as a nail technician.
Right. And that was two years ago.
Okay, and see, this is what I mean, things change, so...
Right, right. So for now, I mean, if you go by what the ordinance says, you could probably cut the parking spaces that he's presented by 40% and still comply with the ordinance.
And again, I'm not... This was late getting to us, but have you seen the notice from the fire department saying that there may in fact need to be a... That it may be required to have a sprinkler system in this building?
Depending on... Yeah, we're aware of that.
Okay. And again, I just want to make sure that I hear, when I hear you say that Mr. Dumay has the financial backing of his family to bring this property and the property's proposed parking up to all current codes for now and in the future for this property?
Yeah, he doesn't have a choice. You know, if he's going to go forward with this, that's what's required.
Again, I'm just wondering if we deny this, is, you know, is he willing to put the property up for sale and move on?
I don't know. I don't know. We'd have to regroup and take it from there.
All right. Thank you.
And I just also note, for, you know, for some perspective, there are many businesses on Mr. Dumay's, in that area, that cross the street all the time. I mean, I think Henry's was there for 50 years with people crossing the street back and forth. I know the funeral home, they cross the street back and forth. There's a lot of foot traffic in that area. It's not a... It's not new to the area. It's not...
Right, it's not new, and sorry, I promised that I will be done with this, but again, you've got two very unique situations where his property sits. So if you're coming from the Market Basket Plaza or the new Dollar Store, in a vehicle, you are accelerating to get up the hill.
Hmm.
Okay, on a corner that does not have a street light, okay? Second, if you're coming from the funeral home where it's straight, you are now rounding a curve and heading downhill. So I would never be support, and I know Officer McNamara, as our traffic safety officer, is never, ever going to let a crosswalk be painted in that area there for those two reasons. So I just want you to know that there is a concern because you've got people coming down an incline on a hill in one direction, and you've got people accelerating to get up the hill on the other.
Ms. Green, can I just say something?
Sure.
Right across from my property, a school bus stops there every day with kids coming off the bus.
Right, and remember, we've got the handle that goes out and the stop, and everybody knows red lights. You, you know, slow down and stop.
Yeah.
You're not going to have that luxury with people crossing the street.
No, no, I understand, but a crosswalk would benefit the kids, too. It's not just for my property.
Right, we're not putting a crosswalk there because it's unsafe.
Okay.
Right, and there's no way that the city of Pittsburgh is taking on the liability of that. Thank you.
Just a very direct question. Are you at a point where you've entered into an agreement with the property owner on the corner of Nashua and Water Street for parking? Is that if we were to approve this today contingent upon that parking lot, are you ready to move on it, and is there already a preliminary agreement struck between that, yourself and that owner?
The short answer is yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Council Beazall.
Thank you. I mean, I again want to say I'm not against you doing business in Pittsburgh. I applaud your efforts. The concerning thing for me is we cannot do anything about the businesses that you talked about that have been there for years that aren't up to where they should be. So with all the regulations that are out now, when we usually get plans before us, there's usually a lot more in-depth. So when I'm looking at this, I'm not sure if your business will need handicap parking. I'm not sure if going across the street, if there's enough curb cut there so that somebody in a wheelchair could get across the street. I don't... In other words, there's not enough information, and so what I do is I rely on people like the planning board and the fire department to give me that information because I don't know every Massachusetts law on buildings or parking or all of that. I know that people have come before us with new endeavors, and we've said to them, you know, you've got to make sure the sidewalks are done over, you have to make sure that the curb cuts are in, you make sure... And there's a lot of questions that are asked, and it's not... It's nothing against you, but I think you need to understand that from our point of view, if somebody were to cross that street and something were to happen, the first thing that would happen was we'd get a phone call saying, "Why in God's name would you ever allow that to take place?" So that's why those... At least I could say to the residents, "Well, we allowed it because the proper curb cuts were put in, the proper signage was installed, all of this was done." And I know that you're here before us tonight for us to give you a vote of confidence so you can move forward, but when I look at the plans and what the planning board said, I can't honestly feel... I would have felt better if your plans had had more in it of all the issues that I talked about, but I'm not seeing that. So I don't know if it's... If when you're getting these things done, if who's ever doing them is following the state laws and what's mandated and all of those things, bringing things up to code, because usually as a rule, when we get plans, we see all of that stuff in there. Is there any handicap parking or...
The only thing that we could do for handicap parking would be the areas next door. If you look on the page five...
And I understand that, so we're talking about that now.
Right.
But I would have rather you come before us tonight and say, "I met with the planning board, I presented a plan before them, and all of the things that they talked about, I fixed tonight," and the planning board would have sent us a letter saying, "We fit... This gentleman came before us, we made our recommendations, he's done everything, approve it," and that's why, as a city council, we get away from approving these because we don't know all of the laws that are in place, so we're accepting what our department people and what our commissions are telling us because they're the experts. They're the ones that go through this process time and time again, and they know. So I can't honestly sit here tonight and vote for something that I know a planning board or a commissioner or somebody has said, "No, don't do that." I can't honestly vote for something like that. So as much as I'd love to have you in our community, and I want you to support you, and I'd have you come over and fix my AC, at this point, I can't. So I'm sorry about that. Thank you.
Council Boshman.
My question to you is this. You're telling me that a purchase-and-sale agreement has been signed, has been signed by two parties?
With respect to the...
With the lot across the street on the corner of Nashua Street and Water Street. You're telling me that the purchase-and-sale agreement has been signed by two parties?
There's an agreement in place.
But there's no paperwork signed saying that he's going to purchase the property.
There is paperwork in place, yes.
Not what I'm told.
I'm sorry?
Not what I'm told.
There's... This was a situation where, because of the essentially short money involved, it hasn't been done in a traditional fashion because the owner's going to hold back the property. He's going to hold the mortgage. But like I said, we don't have a problem if this is made, conditioned on us acquiring the property and putting the parking in place on the property, so I'm not sure, you know...
Because if I vote for this tonight, if I vote for it, and I was a harsh critic yours, very harsh, I would like to see a deed restriction that if that property over there on 196, if so, the property across the street goes with that property. It cannot be separated. what's the lever? That's number one. Number two, if I stand in the middle of Water Street, and I'm looking at your building, according to your plans, you got parking for two cars on the right, and you got parking for two cars on the left, if you recall right, I told you, I felt it was unsafe, I stand by my grounds and telling you that it's unsafe, that people are walking on that sidewalk, I have a copy of the police report that they were down there the other day, and they recommend, and one of their stipulations on the police, that no parking in the driveway to the south side of the building, individual backing, backing will not be able to see the roadway and will be instructed to the public sidewalk endangerment of the people walking by, so he won't be able to see as you walk, you're backing out, and on the right-hand side, it will be the same thing, so there'll be no parking there, all parking will be across the street. The other thing they're asking for from the police department, as Counselor Green mentioned already, they'd like to see a street light on that corner, they also would like to see a traffic study done by an engineer, now, the city of Pittsburgh, they want an engineer to do this traffic study, so they put their documentation to say the crosswalk goes here, the city of Pittsburgh is not liable for somebody gets hit, that's what they recommend in this thing, with, with control devices, I meant to give the guys one, everyone, one of these copies here, whenever I didn't do it, I was sick.
I haven't seen it, I don't know.
Uh, you know, 'cause I was up there the other day, I was up there, I think it was Monday, Tuesday, and I get pictures, an officer, the two officers that came up in the traffic study, they came up, made the recommendation, they were parked in front of your building, and I get pictures on my cellphone, if you'd like to see them, um, all the cars had to go into, into the other lane when they were passing the cops, the officers' cars, they were going over the, they were crossing the yellow line, and they're recommending that they would rather not see any parking on the street in front of that building, at all, that's what they're recommending to me, when they talk to me, because you can see it, and I have pictures to show you, if you'd like to see it, but I'm not gonna give you the phone to keep, but, uh, um, they said that, uh, right here, you can see, you can, you can move the pictures side to side, there's nothing personal in there.
There's no parking on Water Street.
Counselor Boishman, we can't share the photos with, with everyone, so if you could just summarize the, if you could just summarize the...
Well, officer, the officers that came down, Officer Sullivan and also McNamara, said they'd rather not see any parking in front of the building, what's allowed, even though you're allowed, according to the sign, one hour parking, because it's not the same as it was twenty-five years ago, there's more cars, there are more people walking, and they would rather not see that, and they want no parking in, on both sides, and the deed restriction, I won't budge on that, the deed's gonna go with the house, and before I sign off on it, I would like to see you purchase the property, come in front of us and say you purchased it and you have it.
The, the parking on the side, I, it was, you was, I was saying you wanted grass area, so that's why we did it across the street.
All right.
Put the grass for the kids.
Because you show on your thing, you say two cutouts.
That's the, that's the initial plan.
That's the original plan.
We're just showing you what, what we submitted earlier, what we submitted now.
But you know, I have to agree, I agree with Counselor Beazall and Counselor Green, you come before me and you tell me and the, and the council that you want an open place to give haircuts and to work on nails, now, your attorney tells me that you're entirely taking a different loop and you're gonna do something different, but, so, if you don't know what you're gonna do, how do we know what kind of business you're gonna do and how many people are gonna come to your business, who knows, you could open up a five and ten cent store there, because I don't know, your attorney says down the road, you might change the whole subject line and put something entirely different, and if we, if you put something entirely different, you could put a victory auto store in there and sell food to peak against Market Basket, and all of a sudden you get thousands of customers and you don't have enough parking.
Counselor Boishman, your, your earlier, uh, point, uh, was so that it's subject to site plan review by the planning board, so that they would ultimately govern the number of necessary spots for parking lots, so, that's where, uh, that's where an outside organization would, would help us govern the number of spots necessary.
I understand that, but we don't have a, Mr. President, what we don't have is we don't know what he's gonna do now, that's what we don't have, we have plans to say a barber shop, and now we don't know what he's gonna do, so how can I vote on that? How can you vote on it, Mr. President?
Counselor, Counselor Joseph.
I guess I just want to, since Attorney Pusatieri has a lot of knowledge and special permits, what is the, what is the criteria for us to pass or deny a special permit for this gentleman?
This, this matters before you, because the building has either been not used for two years, or it was otherwise considered abandoned, and so the question that you have, and it, and it does not otherwise conform to zoning, whether it be dimensional or whether it be a use, I don't know if it's dimensional or use that's in front of you, um, so your question is, is whether or not, uh, the building has some type of architectural feature or other redeemable quality that would justify rehabilitation of the building.
Okay, that's it.
That's the question.
Okay, just to get that clear, it's not whether or not he's gonna put a barber shop in there, or it's whether or not the building is architecturally savable, or...
If there's a architectural feature that, or other quality that's considered to be, um, worthy of rehabilitation, I could look that up, give you the exact language, one second.
So, I just, parking to the left, parking to the right, parking on the left, you're gonna run over the liquor bottles that are there, parking on the right, you're gonna run over the liquor bottles that are there, and maybe a couple of sleeping bags, okay, that property has been in such distress for the last twenty years, it's been condemned, okay, it's had everything to it, because the city has tried to get that building torn down, it's still there, okay, it's an eyesore, this gentleman is willing to rehab that property so that the city of Pittsburgh does not have an eyesore on one of its gateways, this is considered Water Street, which has been deemed a gateway to the city, okay, so, you're gonna take, if, if the city is willing to take that property and tear it down, and that's our ultimate goal, then tell the Mr. Du Maix or whatever that that's his, that's your goal, but if that's not the goal of the city of Pittsburgh, support this gentleman in what he wants to do, okay, it's ridiculous that we even made him go out and get the property across the street for a parking lot, okay, did we make Henry's hairstyle, get a parking lot across the street, did we give him a hard time after he got a parking lot across the street for his, for his people and his clients to go across the street, St. Bernard's, um, church was there for years, people park on both sides of the street to go to church, and yes, there's a, there's a crosswalk right in front of the church, the tailor was there for many years, okay, the, um, Sossino's tailor was there for mil, a long time, there was a luncheonette there, okay, I don't know what was in the building that this gentleman is putting, but there was a business in there, when Pittsburgh was thriving, that place was commercial, all the way from the hardware store, all the way to where that gentleman's building is right now, did anybody say, oh, by the way, you can't have Zaborn hardware there, because you can't cross the street if you wanna go buy something at the hardware store? I, I mean, to me, that's the most, this is, this is very difficult for me to swallow, that the only reason that this gentleman wants to buy that piece of property is he wants to fix it up and live in it, okay, and then rent up the second building, and then possibly, in order to make some extra money, Lord forbid, in the United States of America, somebody should wanna make some extra money, he wants to put a business downstairs, and he would only be allowed to put a business downstairs if it was allowed by code, I, I don't understand what our argument is here, you wanna keep that building blighted, you wanna put it back on sale, deny this gentleman his petition, and then you're stuck with what you have in your ward, okay, I just, I just don't understand why we have gotten to this point where this gentleman wants to rehab a piece of property in Pittsburgh that is very blighted, and we are giving him a hard time, I am totally in favor of this petition, this permit.
Counselor Joseph, um, I applaud that you, you asked the question that you did, which is, what is the criteria by which we're evaluating this, uh, special permit request? And that's something that I know, um, I remember working with a city solicitor, um, right before this particular, uh, hearing a full year ago, and reciting it till I was blue in the face, um, and, and my, my feeling then was that there was nothing architecturally significant or otherwise significant about the property, and thus I felt the city should deny it and, and then, uh, tear it down, um, we're not, now, not at a point, and I understand that property is not a, a candidate for demolition, um, on the mayor's, uh, potential future list of demolition properties, so, I, I think you accurately pointed out, what then do we do with the property, would we leave it in its present state and allow it to, you know, become a, um, a mark for graffiti moving forward, or do we allow this gentleman the opportunity to rehab the property, get it back on tax rolls, and also, at the same time, take a second piece of property, uh, across the street, um, and, and bring it to better condition than it currently is today, um, so, that, that said, you know, I was initially against it, um, and I, I still don't feel like the property, um, you know, you know, in my own ideal world in my head, I, I would say, you know, deny it and tear down the property, but I don't get to make the second call on that and tear down the property, I get to make the call on the first one, so, um, understanding, um, uh, the, the administration's position, I say, let's take the next best opportunity, let's, let's try to make the most out of this property that we can, uh, on our gateway, um, and try to make the property look as, as presentable as possible, and, uh, hope that Mr. Du Maix, um, uh, is successful in all of his ventures, so, that said, I, I'm reluctantly willing to vote in favor of this, um, with a couple of conditions that were pointed out already by some, you know, contingent of acquisition of the lot on the corner of Nashua and Water Street, and the subsequent construction of a parking lot that meets the approval, uh, of site plan review by the planning board, to adhere to the conditions stipulated by the departments in their report to us, um, in particular, the, the fire code, uh, and certainly I'd be willing to entertain it, I, I, I'm not quite, uh, sure that Counselor Boishman's intent for a deed restriction to combine the two pieces of property, um, is necessary, but I'm at least willing to, uh, to hear rationale for it, um, so I'd be willing to, um, to vote in favor, um, with, uh, with, with those stipulations.
Mr. President, my, my client indicated he didn't mind a deed restriction as a condition.
It's not, that's not, that's not even fair if I would do that, if I just sell them apart and not sell them the parking lot together.
Great.
So, he's, he's okay with that?
He has surveying estate.
Sure, yeah.
So it serves as surveying estate to that, okay, uh, Counselor Caddy.
Thank you, um... Several years ago, the planning board had a vision for that property, which was, um, 196, 198, Water Street, the empty lot, and then the property on the corner of First and Water Street, and their vision was to tear that down and try to market it for a strip mall, uh, back when you bought the property, the other property on the corner of Water and First hadn't been vacant for more than two years, a developer bought it, and he's developing that property, he cleaned it up, so now the planning board's plan of tearing everything down and putting up a strip mall doesn't exist, now, now we're two years ahead of that, last year, we approved a CDGB grant on the corner of First and Railroad Street to put in another park that was gonna, uh, for the children in the neighborhood, and, uh, I don't think the neighborhood is just First and Railroad Street, I think the neighborhood is Water Street, so we built a park where kids are gonna be on the west side of Water Street, that'll be crossing Water Street to go to the park, you mentioned a bus stop on the corner of Water and First, well, there's, there is a bus stop there, and several years ago, um, a car went right through the front window of that store, so what the city did is they put a post there, if you go there, you'll see this great big six, six-inch post filled with concrete to protect the children in case someone goes off the road again at the bus stop, you have a variety store on the east side of Water Street that everyone goes to in the neighborhood, and they cross the street every day, I was gonna mention Henry's, but, um, every, we already mentioned that, the funeral home, um, I, I guess my biggest point with the whole thing is, it's a, it's a gateway to the city, and, uh, what have we, what have we done to improve the public safety, you know, we, we, uh, we, we built a road, you know, for cars, we didn't build a road for pedestrians, and we didn't build a road for businesses, what we did is we built the road for cars, and it's unsafe, so the issue is the road, you know, we're talking about people crossing the road, the issue's the road, that's, that's the underlying factor with this, and if we can't do that, or, uh, improve it in one of our gateway roads coming into the city, where can we do it, so I think, I think the city has to look closely at this, this isn't the, this is gonna be the only spot in the city that we're gonna have these problems, um, but ha, but having said all of that, um, I supported this from the very beginning, um, my memory goes back in, in that area a long, long time, when, when there were businesses there, you know, the, the meat markets and, and the pizza parlors, and the, and the variety stores, and, and the, and the hairdressers and, and the barbers, the tailors, there was no parking, you know, and it was a neighborhood, and, and because it was a neighborhood, it was thriving, because people, people wanted to be there, they, they, it was their neighborhood, they took pride in it, so what I saw when this young man came in, I saw that, kid, kid from Sumville wants to move to Pittsburgh, Massachusetts, buy a building and fix it up and live there, there's nothing wrong with that, I support that one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
Okay, sir, I'm to the fellow counselors, I wanna make one thing straight, I'm not against your business, but my objective is safety, 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 and if somebody gets hit crossing that street, and they get hurt, and they, and they get hurt, and they're paralyzed, what do we say? We wanna decide a business, we're a business friend, we don't worry about safety, because the heck, down the street, they got this there, down the street, they got that, down the street, they got that, you're on a bed, Counselor Green said it, the traffic engineer said, have a, have a survey by engineer, what's wrong with that, for safety, my, the people in my ward drive that road every day, I owed them a commitment to make home, make sure they get home safe, and if they go to your business, then make sure they can cross the street safe, without getting hit by a car, that's all I want, safety, that's all, I didn't give you a hard time, I told you two things, parking on the side, I didn't say I didn't want the business, I said, give me the restrictions, and I'll go for it, and that's what I'm asking for, the restrictions, and no parking on the side, parking across the street, have an engineer come down, let them sign off on it, so if somebody gets hit by a car...
Counselor Boishman, do you have a new point to add to something you previously said before?
That's it, I'm just counsel, because Counselor Joseph said the big thing here, well, safety is a big thing.
Counselors...
Why we have OSHA too, safety.
Counselors, just before I return to the speakers, let's just a reminder, if you're speaking for the second time, I just ask that you bring it, contribute a new point to something you've said, um, and this isn't directed at any one counselor, we're all guilty of it, please, um, please try to add new points, um, otherwise, rely on something you, you previously said, that said, Counselor Clark.
Mr. President, thank you, um, I'm concerned about the parking spaces, which in their words seem, they use the words very tight, so fifteen is probably not fifteen, um, I'm also very concerned about, um, the fire department's, uh, comments from Phil Jordan, and also the police department as well, for parking, so I would, basically, I would feel a lot better if the police and, and fire were on board. Thank you.
And Counselor Clark, I, I'd just say, the, uh, the memo you received today from, um, from Mr. Jordan was simply, uh, just a, more of a, a point of information for the petitioner, letting him know what would be required of him based on, it, it wasn't a, um, a recommendation one way or another, it was simply, um, a point of information to say, if you proceed down any one of these angles, this is what will be required of you by law and by, by, uh, fire code, just, just to clarify.
Mr. President, may I just interject a little bit?
Please.
This, um, this, this property's only gonna support so much, you know, Mr. Du Maix wants... You know, Mr. Dumez wants it to be a success. Some of the concerns that are being raised, I get it. I don't think anybody's saying anything that's not a legitimate concern. If you want to limit the parking from 15 spaces to 10 spaces, okay, and he's got two residential units, then he's only going to be able to put a business in there that can handle six parking spaces. There's ways that this council can control this. You understand? So if you want to say, "Look, we think 15's crazy, and there's no area there for snow removal," I don't disagree. There's no other area there for snow removal. You know, I get it. But there are ways to balance that. So that, you know, I mean, we're stuck. We need two spaces for each dwelling unit. So that's four, right there. So whatever is left is the type of business that will be sustained by that. So you can control that by the number of parking spaces that you allot to the area across the street. And I got to say, with the safety issues, again, I mean, many times, you know, this is not an ideal situation. Government is often about balancing it, you know? And what Mr. Dumez tells me he does, virtually every time he goes to his property and cleans it up, he's picking up needles, he's picking up drug paraphernalia, all this stuff that's there. And it's there all the time. And this is about balancing things. You've got a blighted property, you've got a shopping plaza right down the street, you've got a dollar store right down the street, and you've got, I don't know how many units the one on First Street and Water Street is. I don't know how many units that's there, but I think it's six, that they can do whatever they want as a matter of right, and they're going to increase foot traffic as well. He's taking cars off the street, off the sides of his building, and he's putting them across the street. It's a difficult, it's a difficult property, but if something's not done, it's going to remain what it is. A place that attracts vagrants, a place that attracts drug users, a place that attracts homeless people, which are, you know, if you talk to the police, they're right by the This property is screaming for somebody like Mr. Dumez to go in there, clean it up, and live there. And I think that there are things that can be done to control the type of business that goes in there. Thank you.
Counselor Tran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to hold you responsible for the safety issues on Water Street. That's the city's responsibility. I agree with Counselor Joseph, who mentioned everything. He touched on all the points that I've had. And you spent $40,000 to buy the property. You have agreed to spend much more to renovate the property and bring it up to par and to turn it from an ice wall to something that can be admired as a focal point in our gateway street. You're merely here asking for permission to turn it, to give you a permit so you can start applying for other permits to do renovation. Simply put, that's all you're asking for, because the property has been vacant for more than two years. That's the purview that this city council has. I don't understand why we're making other excuses, making up other concerns that shouldn't be under your purview to trust. I agree with Counselor Caddy as well. I didn't have a problem with this when you first came before the council. And again, I don't have a problem with it, with you being in front of the council tonight. And with that being said, Mr. President, if there's no other comments after me, I'll make a motion to adopt 248-15 with the contingents that you mentioned.
Counselor, I have three folks still on the list, and I'm going to press each of you to make sure you're emphasizing a new point. Counselor Green.
Do you have a new form of intent filed with our building department?
No.
How quickly will you get a new form of intent filed with the building department?
I'm not familiar with the vernacular form of intent. Is that... What exactly is that? Like, what we're intending to do?
Yes. It specifically asks what will be done on the property and if there have been set forth special conditions on the property.
Oh, I think... Yeah, I think he's prepared to move right away.
Yeah, like, the contractors, they're just waiting on me. They couldn't file for anything because the building inspector told them that it was a special permit process.
Right. So I want to make sure that if we pass this, that you are ready to go with a new form of intent, going exactly with these plans, telling about the renovations, the build-outs, the property across the street that you've acquired, all of that on that piece of paper.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And then what is your timeframe to start and then to end this project? The whole thing? Parking, renovation?
It's cold right now, so I don't know. Well, she's just looking for a rough timeframe.
Are you ready to start this spring, when you can break ground and dig up trees and everything across the lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Beazel.
Thank you. So through the president and counsel, Kizmeric, to the city solicitor. And I know that you read what we're supposed to be doing here. But, and I understand what that says, but it doesn't say that we just push aside all the new rules and regulations and the new laws we have. Everything needs to be brought up to code. Am I correct in saying that?
Any work that they do... Yes. Well, actually, and I learned recently dealing with some contractors through the mayor's office, that up to code really isn't that high of a standard. So hopefully, we'll be at least up to code. But yes, as he goes through and makes applications for building permits and takes other action, he would be directed to other permits or other processes that the city will put him through to inspect the work that he does.
Okay. And to the president and counsel, Kizmeric, did... So what is the... What was the stipulation that you were going to ask to put on it?
I could read it now. I'll also... So that way, we can reference that if and when a motion to accept is later, as I said, because we'll have to close the hearing afterwards. So it's contingent on acquisition of the corner lot located at Nashua and Water Streets and the subsequent construction of a parking lot that meets the approval of a site plan review by the planning board, restriction of no parking on the side, adhere to the conditions set by the various city departments, and a deed restriction to make the parcel, the parking lot at the corner of Nashua and Water Street, a servient property?
You could just say a deed restriction or similar mechanism too. And then whatever it is that you want that relationship to be.
Okay, thank you. If it is presented like that, I will be approving it. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
No crosswalk?
No, no crosswalk.
No crosswalk.
I don't... Counselor Boishman, I do not believe a crosswalk could be included one way or another as part of this. That would have to go through a separate process if someone were looking, were seeking a crosswalk. But currently, there is no crosswalk there.
We're not making it a requirement to have to put a crosswalk in, but we can do it to other businesses, right?
I don't believe we can make a crosswalk a requirement. In fact, that would typically go through the public...
We can't make them do a traffic study for recommendations where a crosswalk can go?
We cannot. And typically, that would go through the public safety, one of the public safety departments, such as the police department, and then it would come back before the city council for subsequent approval. There was no language to confirm. There was no language for a crosswalk by either the petitioner or by any other counselor who's made such a request to this point. Does that answer the question?
This paper says they're asking for a traffic study right from the police department.
It's not a request I have in front of me or that I've spelled out right now. Are there any further questions from counselors before we go through the...
Close the hearing?
Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare... Is there...
Amy Green. I just had another point. Is that, is Counselor Boishman making a motion to add the special condition with the traffic study onto this or not?
At this point, we still need to close the hearing before any official motion can be had, but I know Counselor Tran had a motion to accept, I believe, the conditions that I just read off. So certainly, if Counselor Tran would like to include that or not, that's his prerogative. That said, counselors, if all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is now before the council.
Mr. President.
Counselor Tran.
I just want to make a comment regarding a traffic study. Usually, traffic studies are in the purview of the planning board to ask for.
Thank you, Counselor Tran.
So if we want a traffic study done, we can make a recommendation to the planning board to have the petitioner who will go in front of the planning board again to ask for the study.
Counselor Green.
I guess through you to Counselor Tran, or how this works, is that I would feel better knowing that Fitchburg has done its due diligence with people crossing the street there with maybe a new crosswalk or using the crosswalk that's further up on the street already denoted. So if that needs to be part of the special condition, then I would like to see it added to the special condition.
If there were a motion on the... Counselor Tran.
Mr. President, the traffic study will cost the petitioner well over $5,000. And if we want to know where to put a walkway, I think that's something that our traffic department within the police department can provide us that recommendation. But if the counselor wants to add a traffic study, a request for the petitioner to do a traffic study, and that, is that what she's asking for?
Can't speak for my colleague.
It would be helpful if we had copies of what Counselor Boishman is referring to so that we could all see what it says, based on the recommendations from our police department. So...
At this point, the hearing is closed. We have the matter before us. I'd be entertaining a petition at this point, a motion at this point, apologize, to take action one way or another.
Motion to adopt 248-15 with the contingencies that you mentioned, Mr. President.
Second.
A motion and second to approve 248-15. Madam Clerk, do you need the contingencies as I've...
I have to.
Okay. With the contingencies previously stated. Speaking to the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Please keep your hand raised. One in opposition. Motion carries.
Good luck, Mr. Dumez.
Congratulations, Mr. Dumez. I will say that, while I know you've been put through quite a process this past year with the council and subjected to various lines of questioning, now know that the city is, you know, the city is rooting for you, we hope, and we plan to help in your success moving forward. So truly, I hope you're successful in all of your ventures, and I hope that property is soon a shining beacon on our gateway.
I'll make you proud, Mr. Dumez.
Thank you. Good luck.
Hey, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good luck.
Good luck, your town.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
John, thank you. Nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you. Thank you.
Counselors, I apologize. I missed an earlier item. We have a number 00717 annual report, Montezet Regional Vocational Technical School for the year 2016.
Motion to waive the reading and just put it on file in the clerk's office.
Second.
I have a motion and second to waive the reading and have the report placed on file in the city clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counselors, thank you for sparing me from reading that aloud for the foreseeable future. Returning to the agenda, orders, finance.
Motion to send 1017 to finance.
Second.
I have a motion and second to send 1017 to the finance committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? Carries petitions.
Motion to send 1117 up to and including 1917 to their respective committees.
Could you hold on 1217?
Minus 1217.
I have a motion and...
Second.
And second to send 1117 up to and including 1917, excluding 1217, to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 1217. Mattson Homes, Inc., New Hampshire Corporation to accept Flickner Drive as a public way in the city of Fitchburg, and the recommendations sent to the planning board, Public Works Committee, and City Property Committee. Counselor Caddy.
I just want to recognize that Ken Mattson, as he's been sitting here all night in the snowstorm... If I would have realized it earlier, because there was such a crowd, I didn't see him, I would have told him that he didn't have to be here because it's going to these different committees. But I have a question. He's... Ken, how many streets have you built and have been accepted by the city already? Four or five?
In this development?
Yeah.
This would be the fourth one.
So a question. My experience with accepting a street, it has to go to our engineering department, and Ken's responsible to provide as-built. Once the city's engineer signs off on this, it typically goes to Public Works. We vote on it, and then it comes before the council. I don't know if I can remember ever seeing it go to Planning, Public Works, and the City Property Committees. I've only seen them go to Public Works before.
Counselor Caddy, the city clerk is telling me that it's a standard process.
It is a standard process. Okay. So then that's the course it'll have to take.
Hate to delay the process further, but we want to make sure we're doing our due diligence as a city and want to make sure that we're following the correct process, but certainly hope an expedited process plays out.
I kind of thought it was just a procedure meeting tonight where we just go, but my attorney said he thought I should come here in case you guys had any questions.
Thank you for joining us for the full evening. Do I have a motion to send 1217?
Motion 1217 to its respective committees.
I have a motion and second to send 1217 to its respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous motion carries.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I have an announcement from Counselor Beazel.
Yep. I just wanted to say that on Wednesday, February 15th, from 7:00 to 9:00, at the Fitchburg Public Library, they're going to present a program called Backyard Astronomy. This friendly event has introduced Fitchburg residents to the new library telescope, which will be available for a one-week loan after the program. Fitchburg adult cardholders will be able to borrow the telescope to explore the skies in their own backyards. The telescope is funded by the friends of the Fitchburg Public Library and will be maintained by Aldrich Astronomy Society as part of their library telescope program. So with that being said, get out there Wednesday, February 15th, 7:00 to 9:00, at the library and see the skies.
I have a motion and do I have a second? A motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.